Afternoon troops. Another day, another drain. Welcome to part three of the after-work sessions. First two have only produced one fish. Finished work again today, this time I've decided on a water local to work. Hoping to grab a few pike obviously and then there are zander in here. So hopefully some zander as the night sets in. We get to that witching hour. Yeah, so I've got all three rods in the water. Exactly the same methods and baits as I have used in the last two after-work sessions. I've had a little bit of interest on the right hand rod. Hoping it's not an eel, as the old dreaded crab word. A small roach definitely got picked up and moved along a little bit. He had a bit of his belly chomped out, so I'm hoping it's an eel. I don't want crabs. Can't stand blinking things. They drive you up the wall. But we've got all three baits in. Left hand, I'll go round for the swim with you in a second. Left hand rod is the herring bait. Half a herring, about four inches. Tail section, that's hair rigged, size four, micro barbed curved carp hook. And my middle rod is my roach bait with the hook protruding through the back. Started to run on that, so I don't know even how it performs or if it works. But it casts really well, sits really well, looks good. So let's see how the mechanics of it, see if it produces. And my right hand rod is directly hooked roach through the snout, that's normal, small bait. I'm saying that, that did go there a little bit. Saying picked it up and dropped it again. So we're in. It's a bit blowy, I might have to get the external mic out. I do apologise, yeah, definitely. I do apologise for the wind noise. It's a blowy one here today. I'm out in the open, it's not the swim I was going to fish. That's what you get when you've, you know, you've got limited time and you finish work at half one, quarter or two. You're not going to get a pick of the swims on the drain, are you? There was a bridge I wanted to fish, but someone was there. And they only just arrived as well, so almost got there. The other bridge, on the other end of the section, there's a couple of cars up there. Did you hear that beep? Did you hear that beep? We're off the mark. Small roach, small pike, knocking in the other rod going, so leaping away. So let me get back to it. Well, sorry, haven't been doing much filming troops. Been a bit hectic, I had just had one. Obviously you saw the jack, that was on the roach, directly hooked through the nose. The guy that said that rig would never work, said four runs, four fish. All about opinions, but you know what I mean, go with what works. That one works every time. Small, very small roach, no bigger than an inch and a half. And it hits the fish every time, so that one's all okay. You know, I had a lightning run on my experimental middle rig. So I wanted to say more for the note, but of course I said this one wouldn't work. He might be right with that one, because it roared off. As I wound down, I felt the hook prick out, so I don't know what it was. And believe it or not, we had a third run, three. I almost lost count. I think it was a run, I'm not sure. You see, how can you think it was a run, you're not sure. But you know, there was a big ball of weed coming down, so I think that's what probably caught it. And I've been experimenting a little bit. I'm going to change one of my rod rigs over to a Patton Oster. Just for the last hour or so, I want to, as low light levels creeping. I want a bait. Two or three foot off the bottom, very small bait, boffeting around. See if there's any zander in here, see if they take it. So yeah, we've been busy, been a busy little beaver, but we're there now. We'll get it, let's get some filming done and. I don't even know if I showed you the swim or not. So I've been all over the place. Soon as I arrived, I said, I've had lots of beeps and beeps and beeps. And I thought there might have been crabs, but now I'm not so sure. Because you know, the baits are not coming back mulled, so. It has got a little bit of a toe to it, maybe it's lying, catching on a bit of weed. And then it's in the wind, it's giving the old beep, beep, beep. But we've got three rods back in the water. We're at it, let's see if we can catch some fish. Right, here's the swim, sorry it's taken me so long going. So I keep getting little indications, I'm pretty sure that's weed coming down the drain, but. Got to keep my eye on that. That's the right hand rod, Patton Oster sprat. Opposite the mouth of that culvert. Middle rod. Three quarters of the way across. That's half a herring, the head section. That's that hooking pattern I'm trying to use with the hook coming directly out the back of the fish's head. Made one run on it when he had a roach on, hoping for another one. And here at the left hand side. In the margins, over depth. Tail section and the herring, so tail sections on the left hand rod. And the head sections in the middle rod. Waste not, want not. Here we are. Lovely afternoon, quite mild, bit blowy. Going to adjust that float, I think, might be with that. Going to adjust that float, I think I might be with that being so far over depth. I like them a little bit over depth, there's a little bit of play in them. There's no resistance when the fish first picks it up, but. By the same token, you also want indication pretty instantly as well, so. We'll get that in and adjust that. So that's the swim, it's a long. Barren, featureless drain. I say I had intended to fish a bridge, but there's someone there, so. This culvert looked like a likely looking spot, so we've had one, we've missed two. So let's see if we can have a couple more before it gets dark. Here we go. Little sprat, no more than an inch thick. Takes another one, first it was a small roach, now it's a small sprat, Patton Oster. And that's what tricked it, beautiful fish. It's not a double, but it's a lovely little fish. Let's get it back. It's very blowy, hope you can hear me. That's a Patton Oster rig. There's the weight. Two and a half, three foot from the bottom. Check that speed. The trace set in between them. And plenty of trace on the way up to the float as well, plenty of up trace. And that's the link open, it's in focus. A lot of people use a weak link for the Patton Oster. I'm a tight gear, I don't like losing any gear, so. Let's get this bait back out. Well, I'll concede defeat on that. Experimental rig of mine through the eye with the hook protruding out the back, three runs. Nothing, and I've. You know, I've tried winding down, tried striking it to the fish. And. You can feel the bait in the fish's mouth and it just comes straight out, so that's a non-starter. Choked that one down to experience, tried something new, didn't work at all. So I've knocked that one on yet. So I've replaced it quickly with another single hook rig. Where I'm hooking the roach direct, as I've been doing for quite a while, having a bit of success on them, so. As we stand now, the left hand rod has still got the half a herring. Hair rigged, size four curved hook. Middle rod is a circle hook with the roach direct, the hook through the snout. And the right hand rod is Patton Oster rig with a very small sprat mid-water. We've had a bit of action and it's going to get dark soon, so. I'm staying the night, I've decided, decided, I've got a day off tomorrow. I was going to go out tomorrow, I don't really like fishing on the one day off. If I've got one day off a fortnight, you know, I like to spend it at home, so. I'm going to fish tonight, see how it goes and probably, I don't know. I'm just going to start, I'm just going to stay here while it's dark and fish. And if we have a result, I'll stay and if it's blinking hard work, I'll probably go home. But I doubt it, I'll probably, once I maybe wind up and stay, which I have. I'll be here till at least an hour or two after daylight, so it's an overnight session now. The after-work session has turned into an overnighter. She's going to kill me. Lovely evening now. Got my brolly set up. Quite a few dogs around, nearer kennels, it's got my brolly set up. Very mild, very windy. Let's see how we go on. Whoa, how about that then? Got moved off one water, no day ticket anglers allowed on at night. Fifteen minutes in the river with them and we are in. Seventeen pound eleven. Thought it was a double, I thought it was a twenty at first, but it weren't, seventeen eleven. Croc at night. What a beauty. What a fish of beauty. On a small roach. Hooked through the snout, apparently it doesn't work. Look at the body on that. Look at her. Let's get her back. Morning troops, well, still night time actually. Yeah, so I was fishing a drain that belongs to the Wiltsea district on a day ticket. I've decided to stay the night and it got dark, I was all settled in, the bailiff turned up. Apparently day ticket anglers not allowed to fish at night. Now he didn't even let, offer me the option of buying a season book, which is 20 quid, which I might have done. I mean. I'm out of breath. No, he just told me to get off, so. Had to pack up at half nine. And I was, where do I go, because I was over in Cambridgeshire. After zander really, you know, in the evening, but. I decided to jump in the car. I tail it back to good old Lincolnshire on the river with them. Been out about five minutes, 10 minutes at the most with a Patton Oster. Roach. And we have a pike, seventeen pound eleven. I'm worried I'll keep going about, hook through the nose don't work, because someone mentioned that, but I have to take my hat off to them. They said the other rig looked all wrong and it turned out to be wrong. I had three runs on it tonight. And all three I missed, so. I was right on one, you were right on the other pal. That's what the difference of opinion is all about. So yeah, we got the. We're off and running, it's dark, I was going to. Tie a couple of rigs, but. It went potty of course, so now we're. We had a nice seventeen. I did think it was a twenty at first, so you know, I thought, oh, better weigh that. It must have been holed up somewhere because it was covered in lice. But yeah. Whole roach. Fished about eighteen inches off the bottom on a Patton Oster rig and it's had it away straight away. Let's get another bait out there. Good morning troops. Another day, another river. What a performance last night. Don't know if I explained it very well earlier, I was a bit hyper with catching the fish. Yeah, I was fishing the Wiltsea district water yesterday, fished it thousands of times on a day ticket. So I decided to stay the night. About nine o'clock, the bailiff turned up, which is good to see, it's nice to see bailiffs patrolling, you know what I mean? Keeping an eye on their waters, because they do come under attack, so fair play to them, they're doing a difficult job. But apparently can't night fish on a day ticket. Only yearbook holders can fish at night, so. I was politely asked to leave, I didn't, I wasn't even given the option of buying a yearbook, which is only 20 quid. Which would have done me for the night really, you know what I mean? But I wasn't given that option, he just, you know, he made it quite clear, he wanted me off. Didn't argue, just packed up. Table between my legs. So yeah, the importance of double checking the rules before you go. I say I've fished a place thousands of times over the years. Didn't realise, so my mistake, I was totally at fault, so yes, I had to pack up. Half nine. And I thought, what am I going to do, do I go home? And I thought, well, by the time I get home, you know, it was where I work, close to where I work. Nowhere near home, so by the time I got home, the old chain would have been on. I get in enough trouble without waking the asshole up because I've come home early. So I thought, sorry, I'll. Fish one of my club waters, so I've popped up here on the river with them, familiar swim. Well, I went further up, but the water was very low last night and there was no access to the water's edge. To safely return any fish. It was far too shallow, we would have got stuck in the mud, so. Come down here to my normal swim, I know I've got a bit of depth and I can walk out onto a reed bed. Fishing 10 minutes, bang. Seventeen pound eleven pike, so that was nice, you know, it was on a Patton Oster rig. With a roach, small roach, directly hooked. And the pike was covered in leeches and lice and looked like it'd been holed up, but. The roach, the roach tempted us, she came out for that, so it looks lovely this morning. Don't know how long I'm going to stick it out for. I've only got one day off, that's it, this is my day off, so that's why I went fishing yesterday after work. Because I only got one day off of this fortnight and I like to spend a bit of time with my family. So I thought I'd do, you know, I mean, be home for the family and cook Sunday dinner and everything, but. They're all still in bed, aren't they? They don't need me there just yet, so what I'm going to do is I'll probably fish till around 10 o'clock. So it gives me a good, I mean, it's lovely, I mean. Daylight now, half six, it's clear as a bell, hopefully. We're going to have a couple more pike before we pack up. There's a bit of cloud, it's very, still very, very mild, bit of wind, but. It's coming over my head, it's nowhere near me. And everything's set fair for a lovely day, so hopefully. We're going to catch some fish. We've got three rods out. I'm looking at the wildlife first thing in the morning, we've got three rods out, left hand rod. Is a herring head section, middle rod is a herring tail section and the right hand rod is my Patton Oster. Roach, I've got that about two, two and a half foot off the deck. So I'm hoping. There's some war pike around that would be tempted. Oh, it's a glorious, I love it, you can't really see behind me because the sun's coming up the other side. Lovely pink sky, I'll show you in a second, it's a glorious morning. Let's have a look at this river, show you where my rods are. That's what I mean by that sky, look at it, oh my days. I love being out when it's like this. Absolutely fantastic. There's the left hand rod, as I said, a herring section, just the head section. That's directly hooked through the snout. A single circle hook. With that soft trace, I've got the 28 pound version this time, so I'm more confident. Using a slightly bigger bait, slightly bigger hooks. Look at that, reflection of that sky on that water. That's the middle rod. Again, herring section, the tail end this time, that's hair rigged on size four, micro barbed curved carp hook. That rig sorted out a fish on our last after-work session, or our first after-work session this week. Look, I love it, girl, it looks like the old, the water's on fire, doesn't it? Bright red, unbelievable. Nature at its finest. And there's the right hand rod. Opposite the entrance to the culvert to the drain. And I say that's Patton Oster roach, fished about two foot off the bottom, two and a half foot off the bottom. Again, directly hooked. Directly hooked with that Patton hook, this circle hook, it is taking every fish that's. Grabbed it, I've hooked and I've landed. Ever since I flicked that one under the bridge a couple of videos ago. So every fish I've had really, on that, every run I've had on that. Hooking setup, it resulted in a fish on the bank. Oh, donut, just checking back on the footage. That, that jack I just caught. I didn't record the trophy shot for some reason, I had the camera on, obviously didn't press record, what a donut. You see me play it, you see me land it, so. God knows what I've done. Just seen a pike move around in the margins. So I might reel one of my rods in and just drop it down in there on its nose. Sometimes when you see a fish moving, you know, it's always worth. Maybe moving a rod that's not been so active and just dink it down in there. I mean, he's down there hunting fry or she, so. Well. I think we drop a little bait in there. See if we can't tempt her. Maybe, maybe I'll get the hang of this filming, I can actually film the trophy shot on the next one. What a donut. They're not any bigger, but I remember to film this one. Another jack, said I saw something hovering around the margins, so I was, I was just bringing in my left hand rod to plonk on his nose. And it chased it in. So I quickly took the bail on off, let the bait drop. And a little greedy sod took it. Let's get him back. That's number five for the trip, that's not too bad. Well. Non-stop hectic action for the first hour, it's been a very quiet morning now though, yeah. That sun's up, it's really mild, as you can see that. Yeah, it's, uh, very bright, very mild. What pike were around seemed to have gone. I'm sticking it out for another half hour or so, because I just seen some fry, a lot of fry moving around near my right hand rod. So it's half nine now, I'm gonna give it till ten o'clock. If I ain't had nothing by ten o'clock, then I should pack up, I mean, twenty hours is enough. With twenty hours, two venues. Five or six fish. Lost a couple as well. It's been an eventful night. I say, sometimes you, uh, oh well, I didn't plan to go all night, I was just gonna be another after-work quick session, but I was enjoying myself so much on the twenty foot on the Wiltsey water. I felt, I felt there I could have probably had a zander during the night, but obviously my own fault, should check the rules, day ticket anglers are not allowed to night fish, so. Moved on, come up to my beloved Lincolnshire. Back across the border with a tail between my legs and we, we had an instant hit, didn't we? Seventeen pound eleven. That was a nice first fish of the session up here. We had a few this morning, a few runs this morning as well. Had one hook pull. So. Wasn't, everything wasn't unkey door, we were able to say we had one hook pull, that was the only issue here, I forgot to film one of course. But. So yeah, we've had seventeen pounder and a few jacks out. And there's still something cruising around my right hand rod. There's definitely something out there. Hopefully it'll strike before we go, but you know, I mean, it's the only day off. Promised to be home, so I will be home by eleven, so I'm gonna pack up at ten. And then, uh, we go again on another trip. Don't know what the long term forecast for the weather is, but at the moment it is pretty damn mild. But I've got a run of seven nights on a trot now, so I won't be getting, I won't, that's me stuffed now for over a week. Won't be able to get out for over a week. So. And if, it's one of those night shift. I used to go fishing during the day sometimes during the week on my night shifts, but it's just too busy now, so. That's another whole week without any fishing. Yeah, sorry, I keep, there's definitely something out there, I'm gonna, I'm gonna concentrate now, I'm gonna go and sit by that rod. And let's see if we can nab another one before we go. If, if we don't, and this is the last bit of waffle. Thanks for watching troops, really do appreciate it. If you haven't subscribed, think about subscribing, don't cost you nothing, no harm done, you won't get pestered. All it means is my videos will come up on your feed when they come out, that's it. That's all you gotta do. Or don't do. Let's go and catch something, one more, one more! Lively. Wasn't the rod I was expecting to go off. But fourteen pound, fourteen pound eleven nonetheless. Like eleven hours yesterday, didn't they? Yeah, fourteen pound Venland croc. I say he's lively, so we'll we'll get him back, her, I should say. The good old girl. Let's get her back. There she goes, safe and sound. Well, we had a slow pack up, we had a bonus fish right at the end. Which was nice. Another, another nice double, so it's two nice doubles out of here in this session. I say, two, two venues. Fishing both. And I've still got the rest of my day off to enjoy, it's ten o'clock, quarter past. That's me off home now. Thanks for watching troops, really do appreciate it. Unless this last rod goes off at the end, thanks for watching.